George, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Trustee Tremblay, excuse. Trustee Gresenda.
Here.
Trustee Tremblay, excuse. Trustee Garrick.
Here.
Uh, do you want me to approve the minutes previous meeting?
So moved.
Have a second?
We may need...
You have a second?
Tom wants a second.
There we go, thank you.
You have a second, it's only us.
Okay, this is a regular meeting, board meeting on October 17th.
Regular, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on those? Any changes, additions, additions? All in favor? Approval of the minutes of October 17th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes. We have motion to approve the special board meeting of October 30th.
Can't do it.
Can't do it?
We don't have a court. Town wasn't available at that meeting.
Right here. Okay, so we'll hold this, we'll table that until the December meeting.
But weren't those nice notes?
Yes, they are, thank you very much.
A little late.
I appreciate it. All right. Presentation, petitions, communications, notices, general question, curious members of the community. No? All right. Mr. Tetro, codes enforcement.
It's been a quiet month, sent out a couple letters, spoke to a few people. Today reviewed the building on Church Street, then going through the process here to hopefully have the owner remove this or fix it or do whatever, but that's a no-go. And like I suggested earlier, I think now we try to contact him by phone if we can get ahold of him, he lives in Canada, in Ottawa, I believe, or Ontario, and see what his intentions are. If not, I think we need to pursue the next legal step into removing this building. My personal feeling is this thing not gonna survive the winter. You know, it may not totally collapse, but it's in such a situation that the neighboring properties are in danger there. It is a hazard to the community, that's for sure. I mean, any kids playing around there with the slate flying off the roof or the bricks falling off or could fall off, to me is a clear and present danger. So my recommendations to the village would be that we move on this more aggressively.
What's our next move?
Um, I'll have to read the chapter on unsafe buildings, exactly what it is, but at some point in time, Mr. Marshall, the village attorney, will have to get involved with this to make sure that we do this legally. And I'll do that tomorrow, and we can talk about this then.
Is it possible that this is an emergency situation and we can speed up the processing?
Well, I feel it is, yes, and that would be my tact in moving forward on it. You know, it's a, if it was an open building, we could secure it, whatever we had to do. But the building is not open. I mean, I did lock that door this afternoon, so there's no way anybody can get in there without physically breaking something down. But the structure is in such a state that I, it poses a danger.
Do you have signs, are there signs posted on danger, do not enter building?
It's about trespassing, sir.
Yeah, but should we legally to cover, since we're looking at this as a danger, post it so these kids who still go into these buildings, this building is dangerous?
Well, we can put a sign on the door, it's only the one, the front door and the back door that, I mean, they'd really have to kick it in to get in there, but yeah, we could put a sign on it.
But you notice that one...
I just think that'd be a smart thing to do.
Piece of plywood, we can do that. Do we have a...
What's that?
Do we have a dangerous, dangerous situation?
I know, we can make something up there.
Keep it up.
Either that or buy some plywood and sheet over the doors, you know, screw and shop.
Uh, you notice that piece of plywood from the second level there, where it has cracked all the way up through?
Yeah.
That's gonna, I would not want to be on the bottom of that when that fell out.
No, I would, you know, it may be prudent to get some, you know, some vinyl snow fence or something just to fence off the property. There's not, there's only eight or nine feet of property that he owns there, which is not a lot to protect anybody from anything falling, but I think we need to make the effort that, you know, to make the attempt to keep people away from it.
Okay. Take care of that.
Let's put some snow fence up.
Okay. And a sign? Do we have a sign or make a sign?
Make one.
Front and side doors?
Yeah. You know, we'll check on the process of what we have to do underneath an emergency situation, but I think underneath that guise, you can move a lot quicker on this.
Did you happen to look inside that door?
Uh, no, I didn't. I wasn't comfortable going in there.
Scary to me.
I wasn't there with the engineers and it's a big black hole, there's not a lot of support of anything, so I just looked in, hollered, nobody answered, so I locked the door and shut it.
Okay, uh, let's, let's move forward on that one.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
That's all.
Anything for the codes enforcement officer? Okay, thank you, Mike. That's my report. I'd like to offer my condolences to Tom and Kim Tremblay and their family, with the recent loss of Tom's mother, Gertrude Tremblay. That's why we are not in attendance this evening. The village will be picking up bagged lawn debris November 17th and 18th, clear plastic bags, no garbage material. Please have your bags by the street by 7:00 AM in the morning so that they can be picked up. A local resident has requested that the village have a holiday tree lighting and sing-along of Christmas carols. The tentative date is December 10th at the community park on Main Street. We need some volunteers for this event, we need some decorating, we need to seek some donations for refreshments, and we need some volunteers to set up and clean up after this to make this event a successful village event. I think it'll be fun. There are refreshments that are planned. I believe Mrs. Pickett will open up the historical center, where we can have refreshments in there, which will be nice. If you can volunteer in any capacity, please call the village office, 298-4152. Thank you in advance for that. Congratulations to village employee James Andres for receiving an advanced certificate as a water systems operator. I'd also offer my congratulations to Larry Sorrell, Department of Public Works Supervisor, for successfully completing the NICOV training courses approved by the New York State Department of Health with the credit hours. Winter plowing season is rapidly approaching. There is a no parking ban on village streets from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. To help make plowing and sanding our streets less hazardous, this goes from November 1st to April 1st. So please do not park on the streets. We need to keep the streets clear, and it will be a whole lot less hazardous for the DPW crew not to have those cars parked along the streets. We will be calling the police officials to have those cars ticketed, so please keep them off the streets. I would like to call an executive session after new business place, a short one, to discuss some confidential personnel information for the board. And finally, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween, or Halloween, happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. A little bit late here. Thank you. Trustee Gresenda.
Also on the same note, would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and safe holiday. Just a recent update on the American Legion Iron Street, it is still currently for sale. They're wrapping up their bingo season for this year, this week will be their last session. However, the facility will be available for rental, private meetings, and if needed, as an emergency red cross shelter. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Garrick.
The Halloween community party was a huge success, the best ever. We had about 175 people there all together, so it was a lot of fun. We had games that we played, we did end up judging costumes, everyone was waiting for that. So while we broke down into age groups, the other children played games throughout the gym, which was kind of fun. So it went quite nice. A few thank yous to give out, one to St. Mary's Academy for the use of the gym. Thank you to McDowell, they supplied the drink for us. To Mike Lahar, he DJed, so it was really awesome because we had the music going and it really was very, very lively. Thanks to A&amp;W, they gave us free coupons for kids meals, and we had about 50 of those to give out, which was nice. A thank you to Mary Freeman and my husband, who I had to persuade to help out at the event. They were our judges, which was quite nice. And to kids that helped out, Logan Chapman, Eddie Garrick, and George Garrick, that helped run the games. It couldn't happen without these guys helping out, so it was a great help. And of course, a thank you to Rainey Langloy for cleaning up the gym after we left. So, a great event, and I want to see more and more of these community things. The kids really enjoyed it, the parents enjoyed it, it was great positive feedback on it. So, anyway, that was fun. The holiday decorating contest is coming here, so we'll be judged the week before Christmas will be happening, and judging will take place the 19th through Christmas Eve. So make sure you have your lights on the night of the 19th through the 24th, and we will announce the winner at the January meeting. I will try and have the judging done early enough so it can get posted in the paper because people like to drive out and then see the events, you know, see the homes. And a lot of people like to get their decorations down the day after Christmas, not me, but you know, to each his own, so we'll get the judging done as quickly as possible there. You mentioned about the sing-along, I didn't know about that. The Knights of Columbus do a ride throughout the village for villagers to go on and sing. So you might want to combine if we do something in the park and then get on, I don't, do you know the date? It was in the bulletin. I don't know the date off the top of my head. But to combine the two together might make it a little bit, because they've already got a following that every year they get on a wagon and drive around town. So if we start off in the park and then load up the wagon, it'll aid them and aid, you know, our event, might be really nice to do.
We'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah, it takes off from the Knights of Columbus.
The school is going to ask you to march to the village.
Yeah, it's fun, the kids do it, and I think the confirmation class is a big group of kids that get on there and do it. So it's high school kids, all kinds of ages, parents, younger kids, it's really quite nice. And that's under business, I really would like to bring up an old topic of the bagged lawn debris that I know I'm a broken record, but I really would like to discuss that further again. And one more thing, I'm doing as a school teacher, a special prayer service at St. Mary's this week for our veterans, and we are also looking to start a pen pal with any veterans. So if, if there's anyone that you know of that you would like letters sent to, please get me their names and a photograph would be great. I'd like to have one in each of our classrooms so that they are being prayed for and recognized. And, you know, our veterans do so much, and I'd like to give a special thank you to all those who have fought and been a part of our independence and freedom over the years. It is greatly appreciated, and for those now who are sacrificing so much so that we can sit here in our freedom, it is greatly appreciated, and your, your work and dedication does not go unnoticed, so thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Sounds like the Halloween party was a good time, good by all.
It was great.
Thank you. Report from the clerk treasurer, please.
Everyone has expense revenue report for October.
On that note, I only spent $38.96 out of the $100.
You noticed that, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
No.
Nope. It looks like we're doing very well at this point in the season. Almost halfway through our budget here, and I think we're, I think we're doing very well. Need a motion to pay the warrant?
So moved.
Second?
Second motion.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Have a roll call, please.
Trustee Gresenda.
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay, excuse. Trustee Garrick.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Next month, we're gonna have a very big one, we have a retirement payment. So you want the shot?
It's up quite good, isn't it?
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
It's not up that much.
Oh, seven thousand, right, yes.
The report from the superintendent?
You guys all have a copy of my work report. Didn't start out the month very well, we had a water main break on Friday, and a couple other water things happened. I've got a few meters we put in, and I'm gonna replace a couple culverts and some driveways and have a few other things to do. Same as all, it's all piled, ready to go.
Replacing some of the culverts on South Street?
No.
I'm still getting complaints on that already. And if you, if you look down that whole street, it's the whole street. Everything is buckled up and...
It's the plate.
But shouldn't we fix that?
You have to dig it all out, dig it all out.
Have you seen it? It's bad.
It's bad.
It's not even slight, it's nasty.
Put in our budget.
Okay, we have some, we have some extra.
Maybe one thing, it was one home, but it's, it's moving all the way down the street now, both ways, South Street.
Is it on the east side or the west side?
The outside.
On the south side.
Oh.
And the new pump in?
What's that?
New pump in, Puckett.
Yes, for the new pump in Puckett. A lot of that on South Street is because they got the ditches filled in, and the water can't drain properly, so it goes underneath the culvert, that's that.
But it's not something that the owners did, they didn't fill in these ditches, they're covered.
No, but...
It's...
It gets filled in over the years, and when we do it, we're gonna have to dig down some of the front of the houses, and it's gonna have to be done.
Yeah, it's, it's bad. Are we gonna get to Moe too, though? Especially that house next to, that one house, you said you were waiting for deep frost?
On the...
South Street?
Yeah, I'll have...
79.
It's terrible property.
Yeah, there's a few of them.
The school did take care of their property, helped them.
Thank you.
Any questions, Ryan?
I'm gonna get the Christmas decorations up too.
Yeah, shazzy for theirs, I think they have some cute ones.
I don't know, longer than us.
I think so.
More help. Clerk, read the correspondence, please.
Shared services contract with Town Pottsburg, correspondence from Village of Rosas Point, copy of correspondence sent to the town of Champlain regarding codes enforcement. summons from Michael Oliver regarding property on Moore Street. Correspondence from the county town regarding cable franchise agreement. Correspondence from Northern Housing regarding their annual donation. Letter to Arthel Bachelor from Code Enforcement Officer Tetro regarding moving, removing a trailer from this property.
Any discussion on correspondence? Nothing to any old business? Nothing near my district?
No, just...
Okay. Keep plugging it in. One of the fun things I get to do with this job is to recognize, to recognize an individual for what they have done in the community, and I think this is a very important award. And I'd like to provide a resolution of congratulations for George Garrick for making Eagle Scout. I think it's a, I think it's a great thing. I think it's something that you have, you have spent obviously a lot of time in, a lot of sacrifice on community awareness, and I think it's a wonderful thing that you've done. So, that in mind, this is a resolution of congratulations for George Garrick, whereas George Garrick has given his time and energy to achieving his goal of earning the title of Eagle Scout through Boy Scout Troop Number One, Number 41, and whereas George has completed the requirements of and having been examined by the Eagle Scout Board of Review, and whereas George was found worthy of Eagle Scout on July 12th, 2011, and whereas an Eagle Scout Court of Honor is scheduled for Wednesday, December 28th, 2011, is St. Mary's Academy honoring this achievement. Now, therefore, it be resolved, this resolution of congratulations to George Garrick is offered by Mayor Gregory Martin and seconded by Amy, trustees Amy Garrick, Thomas Gresenda, and in absentia, Kim Tremblay and Tom Tremblay, and having been adopted by unanimous affirmative vote by the Village of Champlain's Board Trustees, this resolution is to be spread upon the minutes of the regular board meeting held on the 17th day of October. We had to wait until the 14th day of November, but nonetheless, I need a motion to approve this resolution, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good, do it.
I'm gonna take a shot with this and a shot with this to make sure we got one.
Good job. Good job, ma'am. All right, we need to do some, I need a resolution for the 2012 village elections.
So moved. Oh, you have to read it first?
Nope, gotta, have a second, then we can read it.
Second motion.
Okay. 2012 elections, Village of Champlain. Whereas the next village election for the offices of the Village of Champlain, New York, will be held on March 20th, 2012, whereas the Board of Trustees of said village must designate, serve resolution and publish offices which are to be filled at such election and the terms thereof. Then be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of this village has determined the following offices to be filled and to be voted thereupon with the terms of such offices respectfully noted as follows. Trustee, two seats, two years. Be it further resolved that as required by Section 15-104-3A of the Village Election Law, notice of said village's election be given at least four months prior to said election date, and that the office to be voted upon at said election be likewise included in said notice. The resolutions shall take effect immediately. The foregoing question was duly put to a roll call vote, which we settled as follows.
Mayor Gregory Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Kim Tremblay, excuse. Trustee Tom Gresenda?
Yes.
Trustee Tom Tremblay, excuse. Trustee Andy Garrick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the shared services contract with municipalities for highway departments from October 2011 to October 2016.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second motion.
Okay, any discussion on this? This is a contract that we have signed before, it just allows us to use equipment and share equipment within the municipalities throughout the area. Anything you want to add to that, Ryan?
No.
All right, it's worked out well for us in the past. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I would like for the village to, to pay off some of the loans that we have, we have the funds, we need to get rid of them so that we can move on. One has to be paid this month before the December meeting, the second has to be paid in January. I would like to take care of both of those tonight so that we can save ourselves a little money on the bands, we would have to reapply for those, the interest payments there. We can move the, the funds, move the funds from the general fund, A599, and we'll move it to A9730.6, the sum $55,220. The front end loader, $28,822.80, and the truck snowplow, $48,000. I'd like a motion to pay off these loans.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion on these?
What will our balance be, on the fund balance? A599?
Do you know what that is, ladies?
Right now, we have...
Should be on here.
From last year. What it's gonna do, it's gonna do, it's gonna take off any anticipated fund balance, so we don't have... Right now, there's $335,209.22.
And that's making sure that we have some funds for...
And one payment is already, is already in our budget, so we just have to take out the difference.
Oh, okay.
We want to make sure that we have enough fund, general fund to quote, when we pay church equipment, we need some extra funding here. All right, any other new business?
Yes, I would really like to discuss yard pickup again. I know, and I know it's a lot, and it's an expense, but if you walk around town, especially now with the leaves down, everybody's yards has mounds of junk in the back of yard debris because it is virtually impossible to bag sticks. It is, it's just, it's a silly thing to even do, and bagging something that environmentally breaks down on its own is insane. I would love us to be able to work with Rosas Point to use their chipper to, you know, like we did before, and go back to picking up the stuff and find some place to, to put it. There's gotta be somewhere that we can dump these chips or to use these chips. You know, because people do want to take care of their yards, but it's virtually impossible, people don't have trailers like I do to load up their trailer and, you know, take it someplace. And for those villagers who want to take the care of their property, I think we should extend this service to them and, and put it back into our, our doings. I really truly believe we need to do that, especially for our elderly folks, it's so difficult, but you do see them out there, and they're trying to drag their sticks out, but you know, then to get them into bags and do stuff with, and we have a very large elderly population. I mean, it would be much more convenient for them to be able to just drop it on the side of their yard again like we used to do, and it gets picked up and taken care of, and our yards look better. You know, we're really trying to take pride in our community, and what we're doing is creating these nice little dump holes in the back of everybody's properties.
Oh, have a spot on Elm Street if they can, you know, like, you have a, you have a trailer, so it's easier for you.
Right.
I agree. I think one of the issues, and I think one of the reasons why we stopped was we really don't have the personnel and the time getting a chipper.
But we get a lot of community service people, I mean, that would be a prime time to use them, you know, to do that job, if you've got one of your men there and you've got the community service folks helping.
When you get them, but you have to realize that, yes, people put their brush and stuff out there, but some people and will bring, have five, six, seven truckloads of brush out there, I haven't mentioned any names, okay? And they're just, I found out today by Mr. Dumbar over, because I told him we were picking up leaves, and the landfill in Moores will not take no more compost. The EC will not let them take compost.
We can examine this issue a bit further, and we can see what we can do. I don't know if we can have it for fall, but I think spring...
Well, right, I got it, fall, but you know, it's really something I think that we should take a look at, see the feasibility, you know, even if we look and getting temps for the week, you know, to help get this, this stuff picked up. I know, there are so many people that complain about it, and you know, I've been out walking a lot more lately, and ugh, they're just in everyone's yards, you know, the leaves come down and you see it.
Yeah, I'm glad that people are taking care of the property, and you know, we're looking at this as a, as a viable way of, you know, keeping the property... as a viable way of, you know, keeping the property fresh and the village looking nice. We can examine, sure. Go look at it.
Appreciate it.
I'd like a motion for an executive session, please.
Sumoat.
A second? Going into executive session. We'll be right back.
Michael Tetro as zoning officer, as we are currently doing it divided between Champlain, Rosas Point, and the town of Champlain. So Village of Champlain would like to keep it as status quo. And will be discussed further at our budget time.
Have a second?
Second, motion.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Gersenda?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Both Trombles are excused. Mayor Martin?
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other business to come before the board?
Yes, I have a couple of things. There's fire district meetings tomorrow night. If anybody wants to hire. Fire tax dollars are spent, the meeting's tomorrow night. And also, I want to remind everybody that fire district elections are this December. If anyone has any interest in running for a fire commissioner's position, there's one slot open at noon.
What time is your meeting tomorrow?
Seven o'clock at the fire station. And the last thing I want to state, I guess, is it seems to be... I get a lot of calls in the village here for fires, campfires or whatever. This last instance, it was burning brush. But this guy, he had no idea. He couldn't burn in the village. Now, this ordinance has been on the books since the beginning of time, as far as I'm concerned. So there is no burning in the village of anything, period.
Period.
I don't know how more plainly to state it. You can't burn in the village.
You can't put a hot dog on a stick and say that you're roasting a hot dog. You can't burn in the village.
There are no campfires. You can have your campfire pit, but no campfires, no brush fires, no leaf fires, no burning, no couches, no burning. With that, I'm done.
Thank you. I meant to mention that tonight. I forgot.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn.
Sumoat.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.